Did you have a good weekend? You're mute.
I'm out in Billings.
Billings, wow, cool.
So, yeah. Oh, we're actually driving out to see my daughter Jenna, and we're gonna leave her a car and then fly back.
Oh, cool.
So, yeah, so I'm glad I was able to connect here. I didn't know it was gonna be possible.
That's great.
But it's about 45 degrees and raining. This had been the weather.
Yeah, it's not a warm day here either, is it Jeff?
It is not. Took me a bit.
Yeah. Our house has got cool, and I do not want to push the heater.
My thermometer says 49 degrees outside.
Yeah, there you go. Are you gonna get to visit her at all, Joe? I'm hoping, for you guys' sake, the little one?
Oh, yeah, we're hoping to be out there. We're gonna spend a couple of days in the mountains, and then head over to them and have about maybe six days. So, yeah, it'll be good. Although, it will be crowded. They're in a two-bedroom apartment, so we'll be...
I think we're ready to call, Mr. Chair.
Okay, am I hooked up?
Yeah.
I'm gonna assume I am, and I'll call this meeting to order. Rule call. I can do that by district or just assume you're all here, because I see y'all. The, all right. The rule will show that all commissioners are present. You can do a pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, the republic of the states. How about the consent agenda? Am I, is my mic on? I'm making great progress not having to listen to you guys.
Yes, we can hear you.
All right. Okay. Do we have approval of the minutes of Tuesday, the 25th?
Mr. Chair, do you want us to do it as the consent agenda as a whole, or do you want to go through each item?
Well, how about by exception? Is there something that somebody wants to discuss in more detail? If not, is there approval of the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve it.
Thank you, Jeff. Is there a second? All right. All right. All those in favor, say aye. District one?
Aye.
District three?
Aye.
District four, aye. District five?
Aye.
All right. We have a resolution. Approval of the minutes of August 25th?
Lee, that was part of the consent agenda.
All righty. The resolution for Secretary of State CARES Act application?
Mr. Chair, I think we're on the public hearing. I think we did all those.
All right.
Items, see.
Now you got a good idea of how well the rail authority meeting went.
You did a great job, Mr. Chair.
You know, yeah. The, let's see. Okay. Well, under the public hearing, proposed fee changes. Is Sarah on board to walk us through this?
Yeah. This is Randy Schreiber. A quick introduction, and I'll turn it over to Sarah. So also on the call would be Jeff Johnson, the Property Services Director, and Dan Miller, the Chief Deputy from the Sheriff's Office, if you have questions. And those are the two departments that we reviewed. And with that, well, and one other thing, public comment. We did not receive any public comment or request to participate in the public hearing. So I'll turn it over to Sarah to go through the poll.
Good morning, commissioners. Sarah Ouch, Finance Director. I'm going to share PowerPoint screen here with just a couple, a couple PowerPoint items to walk through the public hearing this morning. Just a quick overview as a reminder. We do review 25% of the county departmental fees each year. This year, up for the rotation was the Property Services Department and the Sheriff's Office. And we took a look at those, and then at the same time, we invite all departments to review their fees and propose any necessary changes that they would like to see in order to provide efficiency in the process and hopefully only review fees once a year. Auditor Treasurer's Office works with those departmental staff and provides the cost of the service and supplies with information provided from the departments. And then we come up with a cost to provide the service. And from that cost, the department works with us to analyze what the appropriate fee would be based on mandates, maybe comparison counties and that sort of information. We did publish suggested fee changes on the website and in the newspaper, a link to that. And that's on packet page number 43 of the board's packet this morning. We did have a couple red crossouts on there after the budget commercial value. And then on two within the Sheriff's Office, the Conceal and Carry permit and the renewal for the Conceal and Carry permit, we, as a budget committee, felt we would leave those the same rather than reducing those as suggested previously. Over a couple of the results or the changes that are being proposed this morning for the public hearing. In the Property Services Department, we're looking to add a couple fees relating to land shark and ARCA search, different subscription fees based on length of service and number of documents viewed. Within the Sheriff's Office, there was a couple incremental fee increases proposed. Those relating to false alarms from the fourth and sixth false alarm, and then some incremental increases in the civil processing fees. With that, as Randy mentioned, we have the departments on the line to answer any questions, and myself. We would ask the board to open the public hearing and seek public input. We did not receive any upfront. And then from there, we're looking for board approval of the suggested fee changes or a revised proposal. So I will turn it back over to you, Mr. Chair.
Lee, I think you're muted.
Okay, how's that? Is that better?
That's better.
Okay. All right. The public hearing is open for comment. Is there any member of the public that want to comment on the proposed fee changes? If not, I'll do last call three times on public input. First call for, last call for public hearing input. Second call for public input. Third call for public input. If there's no more public input, this public hearing is closed. What would you suggest, folks? Did you propose adopting these changes?
Mr. Chair, I actually like, I guess I'd like to hold off on voting. I've got, you know, Sarah, you said incremental changes, but there's a number of changes in the Sheriff's Department that are 40% increases. I've got a particular concern on the civil process increase from $50 to $70. I totally understand that we may that be reflective of other counties, but this is the group of people who do not qualify for informal apparatus. It's, it is every single civil process, you know, subpoena, you name it. It's everything. And so my concern is the impact on people who are just above, very moderate, particularly in a time of COVID. I can see where there's a desire to be similar, but I'd really like to see, I've got a whole lot of questions that relate particularly to that one. There's other ones. It reflects $76,000. It adds up. For a lot of people, the legal process is really expensive, and there's a number of people who represent themselves because they cannot afford an attorney. And this is just another impact, particularly in this hard time. So I guess respectfully, I'd like to get some more information back on that impact. That's where I am.
Well.
I think Chief Deputy Dan Miller is on the call, but I know we have talked about how private parties are providing that fee. And so what's happening is people are paying a private party more than the $50 that the county charges them, and then the private party is coming to the county to have that work performed and charging us $50 and making a profit on that. And so by us upping our fee to the $70, we're matching what's being charged in counties around us as well as what those private parties are charging for us to do the work.
And that sounds like a change in a policy, perhaps. Maybe we have two different sets of fees. But I can tell you, I've heard from several people who represent folks, among others. This, it's broader than that. And I certainly don't want a company to be making money off of us, but I think there probably is another answer in there.
Well, if we, if you needed more time to study and consider this, I don't know that we necessarily have to drop dead, make a decision on that at this meeting. Would you want to do it, take a look at this and then take this up again at our next meeting?
I'd like to. It would certainly give a chance. I'm more than happy to talk to some folks and see that. But again, we don't want people making money off of this, but for those who are not using those services. And I can give you several. I won't waste your time right now. It can be interesting.
It's not a waste of time. I mean, if you've got some concerns, it's great. It's great.
So if we could wait until next meeting, I'm guessing that...
Okay. Okay. All right.
Chair, and I'll actually make that motion. And I would not like to see those companies making that money. What unfortunately could happen is if we move it up to $70, they could then be charging $100 and still make their $30 profits, which even puts people in a bigger bind again.
Okay. We got a motion to postpone a decision on this until the next meeting. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All righty. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. District one? District two?
Aye.
District three?
Aye.
District four?
Nay.
District five? All right. We're postponed. Environmental Services. Shelley? You want to walk us through ordinance review schedule?
Good morning, commissioners. Shelley Benson, Environmental Services Director, and I have Angie Berg here, who will walk us through Packet Page number 45, the Comprehensive Plan Implementation Schedule.
Good morning, commissioners. Angie Berg, Sterns County Environmental Services. In front of you today is a proposal for proceeding with our implementation priorities for shapes and our new comprehensive plan. And as is typical, when we update a comprehensive plan, we look to implement that plan. And one of those implementations steps is looking at our land use and zoning ordinance. So as is laid out on Packet Page 45, we have some options for the board today. And really, that's kind of what we're looking for today, would be some direction from the board on how you would like the committee to work. So the options in front of you today are to choose an ordinance review committee that would be comprised of both the Planning Commission and the County Board, or you could give that task to the Planning Commission, ultimately the County Board, seeing the final recommendations. And then thirdly, you could do kind of a, have a few commissioners. If some of you are involved, interested in being involved in the review sessions, then we could also some planning commission members. We would be looking, having the meeting starting sometime in October. We'd like to keep the momentum going. And even though 2021 construction season is a long ways away, it does take a while for some ordinances to go through. And so really, in front of you today is some discussion, and we'd like some direction on how and who you would like to be in.
So your game plan would again be for the review? What would, summarize the steps quickly?
Yes, Mr. Chair. The Comprehensive Plan outlined a number of areas that we need to focus on, changes, rural business, accessory dwelling units, shoreline alterations, recreational vehicles, et cetera. So what would be, we would be looking at doing is having likely four to six meetings. I'm thinking more like six things over the course of the next, you know, four to five months that would, basically, staff would outline what some proposed changes are for you. Or the board would have discussion and then recommend changes for the board to consider at a public hearing. That would be scheduled at a later date. So from you today, Mr. Chair, we would be looking for is, what role would the commission like to have? Would you like to be on this committee? Or do you want to task the Planning Commission with that? That's really the discussion we were hoping to get today.
Any suggestions by County Board members? Any preference?
Jeff, I'd be willing to see.
Jeff?
Yeah, what I would like to see is a side-by-side ordinances as to how we differ from the surrounding counties. Because that's what I get calls on quite often is, the surrounding counties are less restrictive. And if we could get a side-by-side comparison, you know, a nice short sentence terms of the different ordinances and how we differ, I think that would give us a good indicator of maybe some things to look at.
Okay. Any other ideas, folks, would like to see for this next step?
Jeff, I would agree with you that it's worth looking at our neighboring counties, but we also differ from our neighboring counties on our eastern half and western half. Our western half is like many of the counties that are on the western northern part of the state. However, you know, the areas in and around St. Plater, a cloud, are more like the urban areas around the metro. So I mean, there's definitely a unique characteristic to Sterns County compared to the others.
Any other observations on this? Jeff, go ahead.
And Sauk Rapids is in Benton County, so that'd be a starting point, too. Good comparison there.
All right.
Perhaps one contrast to remember, and I don't know if Shelley or Angie would have comments on this, is we're trying to do something different. So I don't know, while I'm interested in that, I don't know how helpful that will be because we actually are trying to put in flexibility in a way that may or may not be in other ordinances. So I'm not against that. I thought the real question here was, do we want it to be Planning Commission and County Board, Planning Commission or a subset, right? So the information we want is relevant, but what you're asking for us today is how do, do we want making the recommendations, right?
That's correct.
All right. So what's the County Board want? I mean, we've got a Planning Commission that's capable. I think they could, I think they could make recommendations even without County Board members' input. As long as we get, I'm all for that, as long as it's them doing the recommendations. What do you want to do, though? You know? Please advise.
Steve, you were saying something before. What's your thought?
I would be okay with the Planning Commission looking at it.
Yeah, I guess I was gonna say, if we were gonna do a combination, I'd be willing to sit in on the, you know, ordinance committee. But if we go with the Planning Commission, bringing recommendations forward, I'd be fine with that, too.
And actually, I was gonna say the same thing. I would be willing to serve if there was a subgroup, but I'm okay with the Planning Commission. I guess the question I'd have is, will the Planning Commission feel comfortable with with that, given some of our differing approaches? That's a question I have. The right word to lead is, I'm sure you've got a really good one.
Could be in the foreign service. That's pretty diplomatic. Let's see.
Appreciate your diplomacy. I'll say, if we do it with the Planning Commission, let's have them go ahead. We'll have them write it in pudding so that, you know, we can then make changes, send it back, and then revise it again, rather than a simple reject and or accept, I think. So working it back and forth maybe would be the best.
Well, let me ask, Commissioner, Mr. Chair, are we gonna expect our, our Planning Commission representative to be on that, too? And I would say it'd be nice to have the alternate and the assigned individual, because then you'd have kind of that mix.
That's a good idea.
Who is our alternate again?
Commissioner Noch.
Okay.
I thought you were the alternate.
You are now.
I was thinking we switched, because I have tricap that night.
Oh, maybe you did. I'll have to check with Marla's.
So do you think it's me?
I think I'm the alternate on the Planning Commission.
Oh, there you go. So another question I had is, this would be in addition to the Planning Commission's regular work. And obviously, it's all volunteers. I, they obviously said, I'm fine with the Planning Commission doing it. I am. I, because of what I said diplomatically, the question I had was, would it be ultimately more efficient, less work, if we either meet with them, like we did during our development of the update, or we do a subsection, just because that's a small group? And I don't know from a staff standpoint if there's a preferred or better way. But I'm fine with the Planning Commission doing it and doing the pudding that Joe just suggested.
All right. What takes a motion?
I'm gonna complicate things. Just, what about the possibility of having the first meeting joined? Just like the meetings we had with the Comprehensive Plan? And then with that, discussing what will empower the Planning Commission to do and get some general ideas about direction, and then allow them to develop those things and then bring it back again?
Well, what do you want to do?
I think that's a good idea.
All right. Would that take a motion? Or? An understanding or?
Right, that's your question. Right, that's your question.
Okay. Well, okay. If you think it takes a motion, somebody make the motion that would, that we consider initially, initially consider this a joint effort of the board and the planning commission.
Some of.
All right. Thank you. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? There's been last call for a second.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
All righty. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye, District One?
Aye.
District Two?
Aye.
District Three?
Aye.
District Four, aye. District Five?
Aye.
All right. We got a plan? We got a plan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I'll send an email sometime this week, trying to get that first meeting scheduled.
Thank you, Angie. Anything else?
I don't have anything unless you have anything for me at the moment.
All righty. Well, I think that horse is dead. We could move on to administration? Okay. Take it away, Dr. Willie.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We should have Erin and Melissa here to provide us with the COVID-19 update. I don't, oh, yes, I see Erin.
Good morning.
There. Thank you, Erin.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. Erin Tufti from Emergency Management. Oh, I am not allowed to share content yet.
Okay. Could our host give Erin the ability to share contact, please?
There we go.
Okay. All right.
Okay. So just a brief update with some, with some information about COVID-19 and our response for Stearns County. First and foremost, we continue to work in an environment where we are partially in the emergency operations center and partly at the departmental level. But real briefly, we continue our operations. The three main areas are isolation and quarantine, which involves case investigations and contact tracing. You may want to make note that we do see some changes to this area moving forward as the state of Minnesota is moving to a regional model. And we may see some shifts in the responsibility here at the local level as we transition to that regional method. And we continue to provide essential services. It is mainly in the emergency food and medical supplies. When we have an individual that calls, we talk through what their needs are and help them to evaluate if they do indeed need our assistance. And if they do, we move forward with those essential services. And then lastly, we are as well continuing with the hotline and providing general guidance and assistance to community members on general COVID-related things where they can find additional resources, and if the county is indeed the place they need or help them connect to where they do need to go. Next is our planning section. And we continue with the tracking of personnel by position, as well as different resources that we have assigned to our response. And for situational awareness, we continue to maintain our COVID dashboard, as well as the website. And I'm going to come back to that at the very end here in just a minute with an update about the website. Next, we have our logistics section, and we provide both internal and external support. Internally, it's working with that personal protective equipment or PPE for staff members, as well as facility improvements, like some of the barriers that have been put in place to help provide additional protective measures. And externally, we continue to work with our healthcare partners, public safety, as well as schools, to make sure that they're able to gain access to the resources that they need in order to operate as safely as possible. Next is an update about finance. As you're aware, we are working with the CARES Act with small businesses, nonprofits, human services, as well as the schools. After our last board meeting, we reached out to the schools and will continue that conversation this week on their allocation. We submitted our initial FEMA request for reimbursement on August 28. And we do anticipate hearing from them yet this month. And then lastly, we also submitted our emergency management performance grant supplement application for an additional $18,000 last month as well. We have a liaison who is working with both higher education and K-12 schools. They meet on a weekly basis for information sharing purposes, sharing guidance, discussing some different scenarios and what might be coming into play. And as a county, we're able to help connect them to state resources where it may be something where the state needs to be involved in isn't a local decision. For public information, we are part of a collaborative effort called our Joint Information Center. We are working with St. Cloud State University, the school districts, and Centra Care to help make sure that we have consistent and collaborative messaging. And as we have specific efforts that are being done throughout the county and throughout this general area that we aren't contradicting each other's messages. And so really working to put that effort together so that we have some consistency for the community. And then lastly, is an update about our website. A couple of things. If you have visited the site recently, you may have noticed a change. We updated what this dashboard looks like. Underneath the bar graph at the top, you'll see now that we are representing the last 14 days of cases, that kind of that two-week time period. You are able to change that to daily case counts again, if that's information you want, case by age and case by age groups. So just a little bit different way of looking at the information. You are still able to get that cumulative when you look at the daily case counts as well. As we move throughout here, on the very bottom, you'll notice under ever hospitalized or deceased that there's small little arrows. We did add some additional detail there as well so that you're able to toggle between those two different spots. So with that, I am certainly happy to answer any questions that you might have. Otherwise, we just wanted to provide kind of a quick update on where things are at in the major areas that the EOC is working on.
All right. Do we have questions by board members on this CARES Act expenditure program? Any questions?
Yeah, thanks, Erin, for that update. The ever hospitalized, is that from the beginning of the whole COVID?
Correct. That is to date as a cumulative total.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
I think you're muted, Lee.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve Phase Three of this CARES Act expenditure program?
I think this was just the update on cases. I don't think they got there yet.
I'll provide, I'll get to the next item if you want me to.
Okay. Go ahead.
Hopefully my screen is sharing.
Yeah. Go ahead, Dr. Willie.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to talk about phase, what we're calling now Phase Three of the CARES Act, and that's a program to provide some relief for our larger nonprofits. If you remember, we lumped nonprofits in with our small business program. And then we've learned that there are some nonprofits out there that have larger than, have an employment larger than 50, and they're doing, you know, good work for the community and are in need. And so that's, our insurance committee met and is, is making the recommendation. Now, if you remember, the first phase, we did a small business relief. We did the small city assistance. We did a family and individual assistance program, and then we have our own county costs that are, are, will be recouped. As Erin just said, we've, we will also recoup as much as we can through FEMA. So the small business is going well. I think I noted to you in the, in the agenda item, we had over 280 applications. And I'm sure there's been more coming over the weekend. We've actually begun to make payments because we're hearing from a number of those businesses that they are really in need. So we did process some payments and we're reviewing all of those applications. And as you also know, we, we extended the deadline to September 18. We, we also have partnered with, with cities and townships in this small business program. And some are doing their own program, although they're all using our application process, but some are using some of their own funds. None of the smallest cities, I don't believe, have made any requests to us. And we've, and we have our, our department directors all looking at costs that they might have in the future. And we're bringing that information together so the budget committee can talk about that and bring forth some recommendations. Our families and individuals program, human services staff did a great job in making sure that this money is getting to those with the, with the most need in homelessness and those people with complex needs, some towards mental health and education, and then job training for those people that may have lost jobs. So I'm excited about that program really helping some that, that need the, need the assistance the more, the most. And then, as you know, Phase Two, we allocated $3 million for schools. We did that on a per pupil basis formula, and we're taking in those applications now. We allocated the formula based on per pupil, but, but they still need to make sure that the plus are eligible and make every plus. So again, and we've, we've created a deadline of October 31st for that. And I think that's fine. The schools are just happy to know that they're going to be able to have some of those funds, which was the main thing to get the word out that there was going to be funds available for those schools. And so this next phase is recommended, this is for the larger nonprofits. And so we're suggesting that we allocate a million dollars, and, and the program will be similar to the small business relief program and the other nonprofit program. It'll just be for those, those entities that have more than 50 employees. And of course, they need to be community service or service oriented, not, not something that is competing with the private sector. For example, you know, there's nonprofits that are, for example, a credit union, those, those types of nonprofits would not be eligible. They would have been eligible under the small business program. And again, we chose the $15,000 maximum and deadline for the end of this month, September 30. So what we're looking at today is, is approval from the board to move forward with this next phase for $1 million for the large nonprofit program allocation. And then the second thing that, that we would like the board to adopt a motion on is approval to process any small business grants when there's a conflict of interest arising with a city administering their own program. And it might be an example, say if they had an elected official, a city council member or mayor, or someone on their EDA board that was also a small business owner that wanted to make an application. And we actually do have a couple of instances of this. So rather than have those, those businesses apply to, you know, their own entity, which would be, definitely would be a conflict of interest, they can, we will, we will take those applications with the county and we will make those, those decisions, rather than that, that body that would, that would create the conflict of interest. So there's two things that we're asking for today is for approval for the large nonprofit program. And second, for this little process that we can administer applications when there's a conflict of interest.
Mr. Chair, can I just ask a quick question?
Yep.
Aside from, I think, so this is Phase Three, not Phase Two, correct?
Well, I, yeah, I've been calling it Phase Three. Those that helped with the PowerPoint, we're still calling it Phase Two.
Okay. So could you just very briefly remind us and for the public what the large nonprofit would be able to, what, what they could request it for?
It's, it's very similar to all the other programs eligible costs. So things that they've had to do, change to their buildings, PPE, even, even if they were closed down and couldn't pay rent, those kinds of things. So that the eligible expenses in, please, Randy and Sarah, help me out here, are, are much the same as the small business program.
That is correct. I can, and that's only for their operations within Stearns County. So a large nonprofit might expand, you know, throughout the state or throughout the nation. This is just for their operations in Stearns County.
Okay. Any other questions? Well, we've received the report, and we know what, in really broad terms, what Phase Three would be about. If there's no further questions, can we approve this action? Somebody wants to make a motion?
I'll move it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Joe. Is there a second? Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Terrell. Any further discussion? If there isn't any further discussion, all those in favor, say aye. District One?
Aye.
Two?
Aye.
Three?
Aye.
Four, aye. Five?
Aye.
All right. And then the next action would be talk budget. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. Got something right today. Aye.
Mr. Hamis is gonna share his screen, and then we'll get started with the, with the budget presentation, Mr. Chair.
All right. Take it away, Steve.
All right. Hopefully you can see my screen.
All right. I'll, I'll, I'll get this started. Thank you, Steve. This is, of course, our run through of the proposed budget for 2021. And as you know, our budget committee is myself, Mr. Hamis, Mr. Schreifels, Ms. Yoot. And we've, of course, had a lot of help from leadership team and all the other employees. And so I want to make sure we thank, thank, thank the committee and everybody that works so hard on this budget. We do start it quite early in the year, typically in April and May, departments start looking at the budgets. And, and then the budget committee really takes it from there, holds meetings, meetings with all of those departments. And then, of course, we bring the budget, budget to you. You got a glimpse of it at your last meeting, along with, along with performance indicators. And then you certainly don't, aren't expected to take action at this meeting, but we do need to set the preliminary budget and levy at, at your next regular meeting. And then you don't need to take any action on it necessarily until we hold the public hearing on December 1. And then by the, by your last meeting of the year, you need to adopt the final budget. And your meeting in, in your last meeting is December 15. So we do all this with the county's mission in mind, of course, safe, healthy, vibrant county for all. And as you saw in our performance indicators, we, we weave our values into everything we do. So this budget is, is also aimed at being professional, equitable, responsive, collaborative, and fair and equitable. So some of the things that we have within, within this budget are financial here. You see financial, we want to prepare a budget and a levy that keeps the tax rate as low as possible. I think you're seeing that we're, we're trying to do that with, with where we are with the budget today at only 1.59% increase in the levy. And especially this year, I think that's important because we don't really know, you know, what are, what the future's going to hold here with the pandemic. And so we've been hesitant to, to, to use a lot of fund balance, at least at this point. And we want, again, wanted to keep this, of course, the tax increase as low as possible. Also stay a little nimble so we have some reserves available in case things take a turn, even for the worst, hopefully not. And of course, the, the tenderness of the economy is, is in our mind as well. So, and as you know, we're reviewing the fee structure. And you'll see And you'll see that that we continue to make some changes to the appropriations to outside agencies. And we're, we've been working a little bit with our debt planning. It's it we're seeing that differently than we did six months ago. And so we've been massaging that and looking at a little change in some of the projects, particularly in the improvements to the administration building. And then, of course, we we're in a pretty unknown place with some state and federal funding. And you'll see that we're looking at some significant reductions, particularly in in highway funding. And in infrastructure, we have, of course, we'll continue to collect the Wheeler's tax and the sales tax revenue, sales, local option, sales tax. And this is the fourth year that we'll be collecting that. So we'll probably want to start by talking about whether we're going to continue to use that to to make improvements to our our roads. And as I said, we're talking right now about changing really what we were going to do with the administration center. We've re-engaged the architect with our department directors to see what, if we can get a handle on what our new world might look like and what that might mean for changes or improvements to the administration center. We are in the process right now of of choosing a consultant to do the law enforcement center, justice center study. We have it down to a couple of consultants, and I believe we're interviewing them next week. And so that'll be a recommendation that will come back to the county board sometime soon. The next slide is talks about technology, and we continue to monitor and protect our cybersecurity systems. In fact, we've been doing sending out phishing emails that as a way to help our employees learn about phishing and what to open and what not to open. And that's been, that that has actually went quite well. Continue to work on some initiatives for broadband. We do have a couple of providers that I think will be bidding on on some of the federal money to upgrade in the western part of the county. One is actually looking for some help, and so we need to think about that. And if we think anything should happen there, we'll bring that back to the to the board. And you'll see that we're that we will upgrade the phone system. And that was something that was also in process before the pandemic. And so we've taken a step back and to see if some of the changes in our operations, what that means for for our phone system. Obviously, we've we've made use of different technology during the pandemic. So may may change how we go about the new phone system. And then systems for providing services in as many platforms as possible. We've done that on the fly here, but we want to do that in a little more organized manner. As a and I'll stop right there and just remind you that when we did this strategic planning process in March, it was, I think, that was on Tuesday, and I think on Thursday, we got our first cases of of coronavirus, and we opened up Emergency Operations Center soon thereafter. And so the strategic planning process was stopped, basically, but we picked that up in the last couple of weeks. And actually, this continued through systems is something that really came out in in our first session as one of our objectives for the coming year. And again, the board will see that when when we do get done, we have two more sessions with the leadership team to continue to polish up that strategic plan. And then we can, we'll be able to bring it to the board for for your input, too. Organizational, I think these are all, again, similar to what you've seen in the past because we didn't add anything new because our strategic planning process was interrupted. But as you know, we need to fund mandated programs. We will, we will continue, and we continue to work with AMC, MICA, and our legislative delegation. As you know, we've expanded our training and development with staff, and so that's becoming a quite a robust training and development program and system. And and as you know, we continue to work with community mental health issues such as the CAT team and and the new mental health facility that will be begin construction early next year. And the best practices is also something that's coming out of big time in our strategic planning process. And then, of course, what what COVID-19 has done to us and what how it continues to impact us, we don't really know. But we do know that we reprioritized our technology spending, particularly, we did that in other areas as well. But and so there was a number of projects that didn't get done by our our technology staff because they were doing somewhat many other things, which, by the way, they did a great job. And so you'll see a little less of the capital expenditure for the IS department in 2021. As you know, we've been ramping that up every year, but given given the circumstances today, we'll actually, we'll actually pull it back. And then, as I said earlier, we're reevaluating that capital plan and the debt plan. And so you'll see that the debt payment will be the same as as budgeted for in 2020. So those are just some of the highlights, the numbers. If you if you, the total budget is actually a reduction in expenditures. The road construction budget is a big part of that. If you take that out, we really will see it's it's less than 1% of an increase in total expenditures. So it is actually a little bit of an increase to take out the road constructions because you'll see later that we don't have as many projects, but we also have seen a reduction in in state aid to our highway department. And the next slide shows you the levy expenses. And what you'll see when you see some more detail here is that that's not really difference from requested, that's difference from last year's levy. So this is a levy increase of $1,230,000, which translates to the 1.49%. And again, you can see that there was pretty, pretty minimal changes in a number of areas there. We did just get done with with the Railroad Equality Meeting today, too, which of course is blended into the total levy, and we reduced that levy by $38,000. That levy has been, you know, near $100,000, but we were able to show a reduction in that levy, which will help in this overall burden for the taxpayers. And so I think that's the broad overview. And I think, Steve, are you going to take it over from here?
Yes, I'll I'll take it over from from the spot. So I'm going to go over some of the more deeper dive details in the budget. The first thing I want to go over are changes in non-levy funding. As Mike indicated, we are seeing reductions in lots of different areas. We are fortunately seeing some increases in some parts of our revenue streams as well. So I'm not going to go over all of these, but I just wanted to highlight some of the larger ones. And highway funding is going down, and that is from state and federal funding based on the projects that we're doing. And also, some of that is just the projects that are on the slate for the next year don't come with as many different revenue sources. So that then relates to a year-to-year reduction in the revenue there. We're seeing a reduction in fee revenue that we're expecting from general fund departments. So this is again, Sheriff's Auditor's Office, Property Services, and Environmental to the tune of about $93,000, based on what we expect business to be in the next year. Human service fees are also expected to be going down from about $72,000. And solid waste fees for the household hazardous waste are going down about $53,000. There are, you know, some fee area, revenue areas that are going up, store funding is going up, our county program made from the state is right now slated to go up $120,000. Intergovernmental revenue overall in the general fund, for those departments I had just mentioned, is going up about a quarter of a million dollars. Human services reimbursements, services has done a tremendous job in the last couple of years of trying to make sure that they get all of their time studies done as accurately as possible to improve their reporting. And that all, as Melissa's told you about in board meetings over the past year, is then reflected based on the reimbursements that we get from state and federal sources. And those increases in reimbursement rates are reflected in our budget for next year as an increase of over $700,000. And so overall, what we're looking at on these line items is a reduction of about $2.5 million with some other miscellaneous revenue changes. Countywide, it is a reduction in revenue of 2.4 million. And again, that's the bulk that'll be from the highway project. Again, looking at the overall county trends on budget and levy, looking back over the last few years, you see that we're showing that our levy has gone up relatively low in terms of numbers below 5% over the last eight years. And again, we're recommending for this year a levy increase of 1.49%. This is just a snapshot of history of us compared to the MICA counties in terms of levy increases. At this point, I haven't seen a lot of information for 2021. We always get that after this presentation's done. And so as the call continues, we'll be able to bring in information on where all the other MICA counties are at for 2021 rates, as well as our surrounding counties, since I know the board's also interested in that. But as you can see, Stearns County, which is in red, last year, the average was 4.8% and we were at 2.9. We were also a percent below the average in 2019 as well, and pretty close to the average the past three years prior to that. Looking at personnel requests, there were minimal personnel requests for 2021. It was almost exclusively in the sheriff's department for a data analyst, an additional deputy, and a couple of sergeants. We're also looking at the facilities department to take a part-time staffer and make them full-time. The recommendation going forward is to deny all of these except for the facilities position and move that to a full-time slot. We do want to point out that the sergeant were recommended as part of the organizational study that was done by the ICMA agency. And so we're going to defer those until the 2022 budget. Looking at expenditure breakdown, again, I think Mike talked about this in his memo to you a couple of weeks ago, personnel is the largest increase in our budget. Most public service agencies have a budget where personnel is 2/3 to 3/4 of their of their total expenses. Stearns County with a 3.8% increase in our total personnel costs is running at 56% of our total budget is tied up in personnel. Services, this includes all of our contracts for service, our professional services, all of the highway construction, all of our infrastructure projects for buildings is going down 6%. Again, most of that is related to highway projects. Our supply budget is going down 7%. This is, again, just the operational office equipment and supplies for maintaining operations. And I'm, some of this from talking departments is due to the fact that we're operating in this new format, more lean, more technical. And so that's a little part of the reason why this is going down. Also, 2021 is not an election year, and so that's about $200,000 of that supply budget is from not being an election year. Capital light is going up slightly, about 1%. It's about $50,000. This is, again, all of our capital equipment, things that are over $5,000 that have a long life. So this is our auto trucks, our squad cars, all of the technology purchases. And again, that's going up just slightly at 1.2%. And so that reflects, again, as Mike indicated, that the total expenditure budget is going down by 0.7% from 2020. And then we have our outside agencies, as we discussed a little bit earlier, that we've been continuing to revise how we are funding these. The requests for these agencies came in relatively flat, again, everyone acknowledging that this is a unique circumstance year. And so we kept our our funding levels relatively flat as well. We're going down just a few thousand dollars. The library is our joint powers agreement with them is a reduction of $18,000. So that is the biggest decrease. All other agencies have been held flat, with the exception of the Child Advocacy Center that brings a $5,000 increase for the work that they do with us on dealing with issues related to childhood trauma. And I know Human Services is also having a little bit of funding for them as part of their regular budget as well. We talked about the capital improvement plan and that we are reconfiguring that and trying to see what changes can be made. Just wanted to list out the projects that are slated to begin as part of 2021. First of these is a key card system upgrade. Our key card system is apparently run through the, it's used for life, and we need to upgrade the system in order to maintain technology as well as to band with all the doors that we have throughout the buildings and provide some better service and better tracking. And so we're going to be undertaking that next year. That's $170,000. As we talked about earlier, we're going to be reconfiguring the administration center remodel. We want to focus, as we've said all along, most of the projects in this particular set of projects have to deal with, which is related to safety and security. The $3.5 million here is what the total budget for the administration center is. This is not just the spending that would take place in 2021. In 2021, again, as we go through, talk with departments about how we can or should change the scope of this building in relation to everything that we've been dealing with the last six months, we do still want to make sure that we're dealing with issues related to safety and security, focusing on the rotunda and the entrances and some of the public spaces in the building. Parks is going to be looking at Lake Coronas and getting that shower building done. That's a project that has been talked about, I think, almost the entire time I've been here with the county between us and Candy Ohi for about 20 years. We will be undertaking to replace the boilers. The boilers in our administration center are original to the building from 1991, and they have worked through their useful life. And if I remember correctly, they're actually shipboard in boiler engines that we don't make anymore. And so we're going to have to replace those, and we're looking at that being about a $250,000 project. And then the last one that'll be starting next year is one we've talked about previously, which is to do some readjustments and replace the ring road. Again, we own the ring road around courthouse from the entrance to the parking lot right outside the administration center, all the way around to the stop sign by the port facility building. And just in terms of, again, issues related to safety and security, want to make sure that we make some changes there for accessibility to the buildings. Moving forward, again, looking at some of the major technology projects, IS has been working with all the departments to calculate and prioritize all of the wants and needs from all the departments. These are the largest projects that are on tap for starting in 2021. Again, not all of this spending will take place during 2021. Some of these projects will be paid for over multiple years based on the length of the project. The first one, the most expensive one, is a replacement for the software system that runs the sheriff's dispatch and record system, also runs the jail booking and record system, and is essentially the heart and soul of what makes the sheriff's department work. They have been doing a lot of outreach and scope of work, defining what the project scope is going to be over the past 12 months or so, and and trying to figure out what kind of systems we need. That project is currently being written up as an RFP to go forward, but that is going to be an expensive project. We're estimating that at about $2.5 million. We'll also be updating our payroll and HR systems. That, again, is a multi-year project, but again, we're looking at that one being over a million dollars as well. We've talked about upgrading our phone system. I think Mike did a good job discussing the scope of what that's going to be next year. And and as part of this, we don't know that everyone's going to need a hard phone because we don't know that our capabilities won't be that, people won't still work from home or will have people who want to work remotely and take advantage of that and so have phones that live on on our laptops permanently. So as we're learning through that scope of work, they're changing what that project will look like. And again, we think that'll be about $800,000. The next one is one that has been highlighted as one that's of importance of the past year. The attorneys have a case management system that tracks and manages all their documents and all their files for all the court cases that are going through their department. And that system is rather old. It runs on an Oracle system that most people don't use anymore. And so we're looking at replacing that. And it's one, a system that certainly is showing its age as we're having And it's one, a system that certainly is showing its age as we're having people work remotely. And so this is one that we do think is important to move forward. And so this is about a half million dollars. And lastly, our tax and CAMA systems are outdated. And again, we're part of MCC. There's questions on this project. I'm sure Randy can certainly answer it, but this is one where we're part of a joint powers group looking for a new system. We've been struggling for years, along with most of the state in terms of finding a system that'll work. And so as I understand, the MCC is thinking we're finally at a position to find a replacement. And we'll have to do that with the other counties when they pull the trigger on that one. And that's again, about a half a million dollars for that project as well. That'll be just Stearns County's share of that software system. Next slide is talking about the road construction program. Again, we're looking at a road construction year that's at 18 and a half million dollars. And these are the funding sources. I won't go through all of them, but you'll see that again, the transportation sales tax is going to be contributing about $7.2 million towards this year's program. The county levy is holding steady at 2.2 million and the wheelage tax will be bringing in 1.6 million of that funding. Again, there's no federal aid this year for any of the projects. And again, that's part of the reason why the highway funding is going down. Last slide for me, and then I'll turn it over to Randy. And Sarah is again, using project, like Mike indicated, we are using some fund balance and that's what our project fund really is, is fund balance to use for some of our expenses so that they don't show up on the levy. And the one thing that we've highlighted for this year is again, spending about $500,000 of project fund on the phone system. The remainder of the phone system is already allocated for in the highest budget, but half a million dollars will be coming out of fund balance. And Randy, you're up.
So our fund balances for 2018 have had some changes. We have the unrestricted fund balance of almost $69 million. That is down almost $4 million from the previous year as a planned reduction. And as you know, some of that we've transferred out to help with some of our projects. So, but it is a very healthy fund balance yet at 43.75%, which is about in between the recommendation of 35 to 50% from the state. The county tax rates continue to decrease. And this is a result of a market value increase of almost 5%. And then the tax capacity is at 5.35%. And then with the levy increase of 1.49%, that's going to result in a reduction of the tax rate as you see here. So that's a nice trend over the last four years. Where your tax, property tax dollars go, as you can see, the two big funds are the general fund and services. The general fund is going to contain a lot of the funds such as sheriff's environmental services, administration, the object trigger. So a lot of the funds fall in the general fund. And then you can see all the other funds also that make up where your property tax dollars go. So this, this slide is our new tax base that was added. So this is not increasing market value. This is actually new tax base that we've had. So we have $186 million in new construction. That's a very healthy number, down slightly. Last year, we had $191 million, but these are the unverse. Utilities are scheduled to go up about $33 million. We have four tip districts that would be certified. So those increases over the years now would be available to all the taxing jurisdictions. The new tax base is 227 million, a very healthy number. The tax, the county tax on that alone is over $3 billion, excuse me, increase in the tax capacity is over $3 billion. The tax from those new construction and all those new sources is $1.4 million, almost $1.5. Our proposed levy increase is 1.2. So the new sources of taxes will pay for the entire levy increase this year. And you'll see that in the slides as we go, the effects of that. Change in tax base, this is a little bit busy and confusing slide, but what we have is typically have shifts between various property types, for instance, homestead and non-homestead. And we'll continue to see that throughout the year as people sign up for homestead. Also, this is a result of increase in market value. Those are some normal increases, but the 5.35 on the bottom is the increase in tax capacity, which is a very increase in our tax capacity. That's a result of market value and new construction. So this is showing the effect of lowering of the tax rate. Our tax rate went down 3.67%. This is assuming there's no increase in market value on these properties. It's not meant to show what's actually happening. It's meant to show effects of a decrease in the tax rate and then the effects of that on people's county's taxes. Next slide is on average what people will see. Now, some will see differences here either going up or down, but this is the average. So for instance, residential homestead went up on an average 3.25 to 4%. You'll see the changes in county taxes. And as the other ones, agriculture homestead went down, actually, the market value, commercial industrial seasons, more rec, both went up a couple percent. So on average, most properties will see a decrease. And I think this is a slide that you can reflect on. This is a very rare occurrence. This is a very positive thing for the county. Now, I know when TNT statements go up, oh, you'll get some questions on those. And other jurisdictions, schools and cities and townships may see increases or different changes. So the county taxes for most people, I think, will have a very positive effect with the taxes going down. And you notice on that last slide, the residential $100,000 to $200,000 amounts actually went up. And for theirs taxes, the major effect is the losing of the homestead exclusion and then just the increase in the market value really outweighed any change in the tax rate. So for $100,000 market value property, the homestead exclusion is almost $30,000. So as, as that homestead exclusion decreases, as the market value goes up, more of their property is subject to taxation. So they have a big tax break and they're losing some of that as the market value goes up. And that is a big effect on their taxes. So it really outweighs any change in the tax.
I think I turn this back over to Mike to finish up.
Thank you, Randy. I didn't realize I didn't have my camera on the first, when I was talking, talking earlier, you didn't see my arms moving around because I still do that when I'm on camera. So what this budget means for 2022, so we try to think about looking, or at least think about the budget after this. And it'll be the last year of our, of our sales tax for transportation. That's probably something we should be talking about. We say balance is sustainable into future years, and I think that's true mostly because we have a healthy fund balance and because if you look at the next, we're always subject to changes by the state and federal government. And there is, seems to be a lot of unknowns into the future, but I think given our healthy fund balance, we'll, we can weather, weather some difficult time if we need to. As we talked about, the debt service plan is, is being adjusted somewhat. And we'll bring that back to the board here when we kind of figure out where we're going to go at the administration center. But, but we didn't increase it for 2021. And then just a reminder that there's two positions that were recommended in the ICMA study that we would normally have put those in the 2021 budget. We didn't feel that was a prudent thing to do, given, given our circumstances. And so sometime in the future, probably in 2022, we would be recommending adding those two sergeant positions. A note here, which is really, it's good news. Our human services staff has done such a, such a good job at increasing their revenue by their own, by their own efforts. And that is, we are seeing some benefit of that. And not that that will, that will be reduced, but that's, you know, we're not going to see that kind of an increase every year in those revenues. And, and of course, as we said earlier, it just, just feels like there's a lot of unknowns right now and what things are going to look like in 2021. So the summary here is, you know, the actual total budget expenditures are going down with a levy increase of 1.49%, which is $1,230,000. And the tax capacity, as Randy just threw, is increasing nicely, including real growth. Construction and JIF certification is actually more growth than what we're proposing in this preliminary levy. So that brings the tax rate down, of course, considerably. So next steps in the process here, as we talked about in the beginning, is that you will need to adopt, adopt the preliminary levy and budget at your next meeting, your last meeting in September. And then on December 1st, we'll hold the TNT and take that public input. And of course, before that, the notices go out to the public. And then your last meeting of 2020 is December 15th. And so that's the date that, that you would need to adopt the final budget. And I believe that's all we have. And we're really happy to entertain some questions or comments.
Like, the levy has 2 million, something for road construction? What's, what was that? Was that 7 million last year or the year before?
Well. Am I muted? No, I'm okay. The, the, the total levy to the highway would have been a larger number. I think what, what Steve was showing me was the amount that's going to construction is a 2.2 million.
That's correct.
The total, you know, the levy also supports the operations of the departments. Does that help?
Well, I wanted a comparable number. I was looking at my old material and I couldn't find anything. The only thing I could find was 2020 was 7.4 million, 2019, 7.4 million. And now we have the 2.2. And are those comparable or is that different?
The 2.2 is part of the 7 million. So again, we show the highway levy was for 7.4 in 2020 and it's going to be 7.6 for 21. And of that 7 million, 2.2 million is going not to operations, but to construction. And that number is.
Okay, that answers, that answers my question.
Okay.
Because I was thinking, I couldn't find anything with the 7 million. Maybe I just missed it.
Great. Any other questions?
One thing too, that still bothers me all the time is some of the outside agencies that we, that we fund. We've had real problems with the Initiative Foundation in the past with them misquoting statistics and lacking out part of their 990 forms and different things. And we're still funding them. And then the Humane Society, now we got the St. Cloud Downtown Council. I think there are other cities that have councils and they don't fund them. And, and still we don't see any veterans organizations on this list, which to me would be more important than funding a Humane Society. So I think those are some areas that really need to be looked at.
Yeah. As you know, we, we reduced a number of those the last few years and this year left them fairly constant. And certainly if the board wants to make some changes to some of these, we certainly can. I think a couple of those examples, some, let's say Cloud Downtown Council, we used to pay them like $22,000 or something like that. And we reduced that down to more what it would be like if we were a member because we are, you know, a business downtown. So that's where we came up with that number. And a number of these other ones have been reduced. The Tri-County Humane Society, we decided we were reducing that, but now we're hoping to be able to use them for our sheriff's department. And so we left that, that one there as well. But certainly if the board wants, wants to make some changes there, we certainly do that.
I just wanted, go ahead.
I was just going to have a question for Mike. If what the staff slide presentations, are they going to be on the website eventually too, or available?
Yeah, they'll put, put that on the budget where we have all the other budget information.
Okay, thanks.
And on those, again, outside agencies, Commissioner Natch, just because you spoke up, reminded me of it because I think it was one of your requests last year. We, we tried to do something, talked to a number of other like chambers and EDAs and thought about it. Maybe we could do a different model where we supported some of those, those entities throughout the county and some of the smaller towns. And we really actually didn't come up with a very good plan because there wasn't a lot of eyeing about it. There was a lot of thought that that just doesn't make sense to do that. So we did go through that process last summer, actually.
Well, I just, I wanted to thank staff. I mean, it's good to see the kinds of innovation that we have and then also the acknowledgement and efforts to be working to keep this down. I know we're not voting on this today. We'll have an opportunity for the public to give input, but there's been a number of trends that are really very positive, you know, seeing better outcomes and seeing some reduced costs. And clearly, using technology as example, we have to keep investing in that. We don't, we can't really do our work as a county if we don't do that. So just want to acknowledge that because it is actually a big deal. And personally, I continue to be less worried about this year's revenue than next year's revenue. And so I think that you've shown some real prudence and the approach there too. So thank you.
Okay, any other comments by board members?
This one, firstly, you know, I've got to say something. I just wanted also to say, you know, our investments into technology and broadband, those that we invested in previous years have allowed us to, you know, at least participate remotely under this COVID situation. So those were good investments. And again, we should keep an eye on making sure we don't short ourselves anywhere. Also departments, again, appreciate them reducing what they could in their departments. Also look for anything else we can, because again, I think we're going to see a squeeze on the public and we want to reduce that. Mike, you know, just looking at, as far as the increase for those homeowners at 100,000 and 200,000, that was a reduction in the homestead exclusion. You know, again, it was, hope we can do something for those folks, but that's something out of our control. Is that correct?
Yeah, that, that's correct, Commissioner. As that value goes up, then they lose that exemption. So even that little, that little inflationary value that might be increased, if, if their value only went up that much, they would have been seeing a decrease in their taxes. But, but that exemption lessens as their value goes up. So that complicates it and creates that difference that you saw.
And then if I can just add one more thing and maybe correct lens Meyer, and I know this is probably Randy and Jeff Johnson's department, but you know, looking forward, I don't know if they study this at all. So if like this year, you know, you're seeing this huge increase in building material costs. So there's a very good possibility because people are bidding homes higher than actually what the values are. Is that going to have maybe an adverse effect next year as well? I don't know if the department studies those types of things or if they see, I suppose they won't see those trends till the end of the year when they get the reports in to see what valuations are.
Yeah, I think when, when Jeff does his update, that would be a good question to ask him. But I know that the housing market is very strong. We're seeing a lot of transfers probably because of low interest rates and values are very strong too. So our building and housing market is very strong in central Minnesota. And eventually, you're right, we will see that continue to increase.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Any other, any other questions or comments? I'm wondering at some point if I don't. I'm wondering at some point if, I don't know what the restrictions, limitations are relative to our outstanding bonds. And bond issuance, we don't dwell on the cost of doing that, but it ain't cheap, you know. Are there any opportunities that would justify the effort on refinancing? I mean, you're talking about debt service. It's under, it's a smaller item in the grand scope of things. It's under five percent of the budget, but does that make any sense whatsoever? Is with interest rates where they are at historic, historic lows?
Yeah. Yeah, we, we continuously look at refinancing. I think a lot of the debt we have left now, we, is going to be retired within the next couple of years. But at this point, to refinance is a little bit post prohibitive, right? The issuing cost outweighs the savings. Because the time period is so low. But yeah, it is something we look at. And I think with debt service, what the biggest concern and the biggest, biggest planning effort is, is what we're going to be doing in the future. So that's what's going to be driving debt service. Yeah, that's a good, good point.
The, and not much else. This is a, from me anyway, it's a blizzard of information and, you know, this is a necessary to build our understanding of where we're, where we're at going forward. Are there any other questions related to the, the preliminary budget presentation? If you go back, you know, after the meeting and grind through this, you get another cut at the apple at the next meeting. And if you don't have anything else, can we move on to issues by commissioners? Great, District One?
We've covered mine, thank you.
Two?
I'm good.
District Three?
None.
I don't have anything. Steve?
I'm good too.
Oh. Well, keep taking those medications, folks. This went pretty well in spite of leadership. So ever forward, never straight, I guess would be my nephew's comment on this meeting. Thank you very much. This meeting's adjourned.
Thanks, everybody. Bye.
Thanks. Have a good day.